So we'll alter the city council meeting at seven P M. And I see council member Lovett, it's like he's trying to start the teams meeting. I don't know if you saw that, John.
Uh, I don't have games.
Oh, you don't? Okay, let me, you, okay, I'm gonna text him super quick. If that's okay with everyone, or I'm also, yeah, if that's his number, send it through email. I can send him a text email. I don't think I've regained his contact. Oh wait, I just have to remember the old council member that he has the number. Okay, alright, it's in my phone, but we do have warrants, so we'll just go ahead and continue. So everyone, please rise for the class. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May you take your role?
Certainly. Mayor Oaklander. Mayor Prothen, Henry.
Henry.
Mister Islington here, Mister Schaefer here, Mister Murphy. Mister Soffel here, Miss Naffel.
Karen.
Mister Lovett.
Alright, we have a warrant, thank you. Is there anything under additions or corrections to the agenda? Thanks, Ian, and we'll move on to adoption of the council agenda. Do you have a motion?
Uh, sorry, I might add an addition.
Okay.
Uh, we take a couple minutes to talk about fireworks.
Uh, you can bring that up during your council report.
Oh, okay.
And there might be, yeah. Uh, there is a section in a speaking report on.
Oh, okay, excellent, thank you.
Alright, so is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moving on. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion passes. And now we have comments from the audience. Individuals can speak for up to three minutes. Do we have anyone online attending that's not a council member?
Uh, we have.
There he is.
We don't have anybody.
Okay, and if anyone in the audience wants to speak, just come up to the podium and let us know your name and address. And did we have any written comments tonight?
We did not.
Okay, alright, so that will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So moving. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Or aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Alright, first up, we have our public hearing, uh, which is six-year transportation improvement program. So that I will open the public hearing and hand it over to Director Luchowski.
Um, it's faster than I expected, and you're not. You need the presentation? Yeah, you want to just pop that? Sure, I mean, I have it here. Oh, I'm getting ready. Yeah, I guess I can do that. Alright, you got it. Okay, well, with a clean mayor council, citizens and staff, the Luchowski Public Works. It would get into. What we have before you is the annual transportation improvement program, AKA tip, public hearing to consider the project list. Next slide. As I, this, uh, provides tip requirements, any identified changes over the previous year, uh, the list itself and the timeline. That's like. Uh, we did essentially pull the same meditation at the last meeting, but uh, the conservative establishes the city's transportation improvement plan and project list. Uh, it's required annually to be adopted and submitted to W S D O T. Um, this required to be a supporting element of it, supported by the transportation element of the complaint. Meaning, you know, if you're gonna try to add projects, we're gonna make sure the project list, judge of the comprehensive plan and the overall comprehensive planning element of the city. And this does identify our top transportation projects. Um, just a couple of quick images, how the whole process, you know, growth management act, you got state, county, uh, city, and then the individual city levels, uh, multimodal activity, all elements are part of transportation, bikes, heads, great transit and vehicles. Um, the implementation of our program also overlays with uh, state and thoroughly class roadways. Those are what make us eligible for either state and or federal grants. So federal, federal grants, uh, unless they're specifically designated as any, I have to be on a project that is on a federally classed roadway. We currently have uh, more four if you count the highways, so state about two or three, which technically isn't ours, but it is in the city, Cherry Valley Road, Big Rock Road, and Third Avenue. I'm excited. The differences in this year's list over last year's list is just the addition of partially completed work on First Avenue, part of M two, so just change that on the plan. Uh, and any development related activity on a corridor that is identified on the tip, they do uh, are allowed some reimbursements against their transportation impact fees. And we also designate which roads on the list will be partially whole or none related to development and/or provided by development. The next slide. Uh, the six-year tip itself. Um, while it is an expansive list, uh, in, in general includes work on Main Street. Um, not just only on the street itself, but at designated intersections, so Virginia, one forty-third, one forty-fifth. Uh, the First Avenue corridor is on there, one forty-fifth is on there between third and two seventy-fifth, since it's quasi undeveloped, as well as the portion between Main and Third, uh, first and second avenues, south of Old Town. Um. Third Avenue itself, one forty-third place, Big Rock Road, Baton Road, and northeast one fifty. Those have programs that are identified on our project list, so that would be like a non-motorized improvement, which can spread anywhere throughout the city. Um. Non-motorized improvements, uh, we identified some for safe routes to school and then other elements on traffic calling programming. Uh, we also have an M and O citywide program, which dovetails into our transportation benefit district. And citywide planning for ADA improvements as required by federal law. Uh, we do keep, uh, next slide, we do keep a, a tally of projects that were completed and were paid for with borrow money, so the bottom bottom corner R two is funded in part with uh, traffic impact fees, but also some borrow money, so we represent that to just signify the uh, the memory of knowing why we have some borrowed money on the budget documents. This opportunity, uh, or until the budget, uh, the, the wanted amount of paper. Uh, next slide. So just the real timeline, started this in May, um, presented on the sixth, and we are here tonight at the hearing. Uh, at this time, after hearing public comment, if any, and then discussion, we would uh, recommend approval and adoption of the tip itself for submission to watch out by staff. Next slide. That is the presentation for public comment.
Any members of the audience wanna speak on the public hearing today? Uh, do we have anyone online? If so, you can raise your hand, but I don't see any attendees. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And we wander regular agenda. Um, first step, we have the mayor's report, and the mayor is at the E W C conference, so not here. Uh, so that will move to the city administrators' report.
Great.
Okay, that's bringing it up.
Sorry, real quick question, Steve, do we need to approve something?
It's, it's something that won't do then, or unfinished.
This time, oh, okay, well.
I missed it too. It was, I don't know, it wasn't underlying.
It's the improved format. It's changed a little.
Thank you, uh, council staff, members of the public, Cindy McNabb, city administrator. Uh, this is the city administrator's update and report for uh, June twenty. Next slide. Uh, and next slide, please. So we have some upcoming meetings, we have, um, it's not really a meeting, but summer stage begins July twelfth, um, we're almost done planning it, we have the food trucks, um, taken care of, all of the bands selected, and everything's moving along really well. Cass has been training Rita on how to, um, how to do summer stage and all of the elements of it, we're creating a pretty comprehensive checklist of everything that goes into doing summer stage. Um, so pretty exciting, and um, I think Cass is happy to have some extra hands and help on summer stage this year. Uh, July twenty-sixth, there's a joint planning committee, um, and council meeting on housing. That's coming up August one, um, we've talked a little bit about, but on this slide night out against crime. And then August ninth is when we're having a community open houses, there'll be an end, and a P M, um, for the housing action plan. And more will come on soliciting, um, the community and notifying the community of that, um, community open house on the housing action plan. Um, so more to come on that. Next slide. Uh, our community development department has, um, again, given us a lot of stats, and be kidding how busy they are. Um, so the twenty-sixth, um, well, uh, you can all read it here, but a lot of permits, um, issued in May, uh, one hundred and eighty-two permits are under review, uh, two hundred and fifty-nine inspections, and we're over a thousand inspections for the year. Um, the R P for the twenty twenty-four comp plan closed, and we got two submissions, one was largely non-responsive. Um, the other submission is the one we're gonna go with, and uh, we'll have it to council at that July council meeting that contract. Uh, the R P for trails, uh, park trails and open space plan was issued last week, and so we're hoping to get some good feedback from that. And then, uh, Director Thomas and I had a really good, uh, meeting with the school district on their, um, on the demographics that they are anticipating for school enrollment and the pieces they collect. And we've invited them to come to council in September to give a presentation on it. And then next slide. And while we were at the school district, um, they have a call for volunteers that they wanted us to bring to council. They are looking for two sets of volunteers, the capital assets advisory committee, as well as the financial advisory committee, so we told them that we would, uh, um, and elevate their message. Next slide. Um, and I will turn this over to Director Luchowski, so he can share all the good work of his department.
Uh, thank you, Steve Luchowski, public works. Uh, we've initiated the, the move out of the engineering offices over to the rec center. Um, there are still some crew over there displaced from COVID, but aside from crew in the space down below, we've we continue to stay split, so they'll be housed, uh, with us. Um, we've, uh, and we do expect the contractor to mobilize in July seventeen. Uh, emergency management coordinator, you met Luke Eckert, F P R at the Cal last week. Uh, he is full speed ahead. And I know I am appreciative of what we're off, offloading of my schedule and delegated task onto him. Who will be coming for with some, some work we have to go through and update the coordinated management plans, he's on that. Um, just converted the radios this last week through King County, the emergency radios, working with our police station. So, and some resume, there's a lot going on. I am involved with fireworks programming and weather related, uh, reconnaissance, that's ongoing. Staff is, uh, we'll have homework staff supporting summer stage and like, uh, C A McNabb mentioned, Rita's you know, taking on what Cass has done for quite a while, so there'll be a little bit of a transition, but, um, should be great for moving forward in the years to come. Uh, we will be supporting them and, and working with Rita on, it's nice to have that house who's around and on teams and can make calls and, and give information. Uh, we had a great discussion at the last Cal about some, uh, access from some private parcels at Safeway and Starbucks Corner on U two or three, as well as um, Big Rock, did review the accident reports. Again, we can only, don't shoot the messenger, all I see is what's on the report, so uh, there's very few accidents at the physical driveway in Starbucks side, as well as the Safeway side on two or three, not ignoring any sort of you know, what do they call moving violations that are unaccounted for when people go the wrong way and that, but we will be working on some, uh, we're gonna update the channelization out there and just brighten what's there, there's a lot of channelization which is striking the road that is worn off, so we'll, we'll take care of some of that on the Safeway. There's a lot of trees that are in the way, so we're working on, on clearing some of the work, it's Safeway's property to some extent, but it's kind of a blurred line between public access and roadway access, so we're gonna be cleaning up some things in that respect. And any sort of additional changes to channelization that doesn't exist goes through a washout process. Certainly adding curbing into the road right away, uh, goes through a washout process, so for the time being, we're gonna look at that and then, you know, have some conversations with washout. Uh, surplus auction, we had the one, two, three, four, five vehicles go to auction last week. Um, quite impressed with what happened there, so we had twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars worth of, uh, goods surplus at auction, so, uh, I think well more than we expected. So that was, that was really good, and the other good news, right or wrong, I did not find any revenue budgeted. So everything, we try to usually reflect surplus sales, the, you know, to cover all of the money back we expect in the funds for replacement funds, uh, but I, I did not see any, uh, what's hard. Not that we don't have a current director, but, uh, I'm pretty confident I know where those revenues would be, and they're not there, so that's good news, uh, we'll recognize that, and we're making it, which just so you folks are, are aware, all the directors have access to a form or anything we find along the way that we wanna recognize in a mid-buy adjustment. Uh, we're, we're including things as we go. So, you know, my note says, sale surplus items, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred to the good, not recognized, I listed the funds that are normally going to, and then just marching along, and then SCADA wrapping up, uh, which has been a long time coming, but it's very interactive, so we're, we're continually building um, pages and accesses and, uh, some graphics, so next slide. Uh, a little small there, but if you, uh, have this in the packet, you can see, so the top is like an overview screen. Every gray area is another touch-in, so it's not gonna be active, uh, obviously on this thing, because it's just a screenshot. There are one of those, an access control window into the next, um, data set, so top left is the tank on top of one forty-four, the big tank in the middle is Big Rock, the two gray, uh, bombs on the right, the upper one is the toll line, and the bottom one is the toll two. Uh, we now have integrated pouring, uh, residual monitoring continuously, and we have it down in the shop, which is in the lower zone, as well as at the four fifty tank. It's not recognized on, but I'll come back with a, like, a couple slides in the meeting where we have some time to share this data, and the bottom slide is a, the data collection module, you can say your parameters, it's just the data output. But we have been having some problems with some PRVs, um, and this is an easy way to look and see what's causing it, so you know, we get a high pressure alarm, you jump into the system, why do you have a pressure alarm? Well, you can see what's going on, and that looks like it's a lot of those are like one day periods, um, but the pressure jumped up, because the water coming in from the toll, of the toll line, we have two, um, pressure reducing valves on two sides of that intake, one of them fouled, so it actually brought pressure across the system, it increased it, uh, which it shouldn't do, so, you know, we shut down, look at it, get it fixed, and move on, so uh, SCADA is very helpful for helping us identify where the problems came from, since we have monitoring stations now for other systems. Yeah, lots going on, we're, we're looking to wrap that up, but, uh, the twenty-seventh is last day, hopefully, uh, the last bit of hardware that can install will be worked on with the SCADA in present, we're doing our, uh, our system integrator.
Next slide. And then, uh, this is Ethan, uh, asking for, uh, members of committees, so I got an email from Evergreen Health. They are seeking the regional, um, Woodville, Evol, uh, representative on the King County Public Hospital District. So anybody interested in serving on that, um, committee, please let me know, I'll send you the application for it. And, and then we talked a little bit about it last meeting, but please submit any names that you have or nominees to the creative district position. I need to let, um, uh, council member Sarah Perry know by the end of the month, we're gonna nominate someone in Duval to, uh, create a district position. And again, the encouragement is for it to be a member of the community, uh, it cannot be a member of staff. Uh, I heard from the assistant fire chief on Friday, after a meeting that I had with her, the Italian chief, myself and Luke, uh, the emergency management coordinator on fireworks. As of last Friday, they're recommending fireworks be allowed to be sold and, uh, set off in Duval. She's going to provide me on Friday, another set of recommendations with data on the, the fuel ranges. So either way, whatever decision, whatever recommendation she makes to the mayor, be they based on data that they put together probably tomorrow, the next day, to get it to us by Friday. The goal is to turn around any final decision by Friday, because I will give seven days for retailers of fireworks enough time to purchase or not purchase before, um, you know, a last minute call is made. So I'm hoping that on Friday, we'll have enough information that we can turn around the decision from the mayor. And that would only be if we're banning fireworks, but right now it's. And then finally, uh, we talked about it last council meeting, but we have resolved this, I'm gonna call me a team, um, issue with the, um, outcome of the study. And then that was the final slide, but any questions for any of us?
Also, I'm at, yeah, I have a question for Director Luchowski, and I don't know if you saw, I think you're on Facebook, maybe you heard. Yeah, I figured, um, so there was a post about the water quality in Duval, I'm not sure if you saw that. But, um, I think it's called the Environmental Working Group, they do a lot of, you know, just information to different communities about safe products and water quality apparently as well, and the person shared Duval's information and said, hey, what can we do about this? And when I looked at the details, a lot of the numbers that were higher than what their recommendations are, it doesn't mean that it was out of range or was legal, but what they would recommend is healthy, looked like possibly maybe related to chlorine byproducts or something. Anyway, I just wanted to let you know that that was out there, and if you get any questions, um, would you put?
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on the, the report? Go ahead, council member Schaefer.
So, um, we'll see, Cynthia, I just wanted to make an update on, uh, uh, using the facility by other groups.
So, uh, I think we have everything ready, I will be, uh, sending it out. Um, we have shared, uh, developed a sketch of how this is looking and a new checklist, and so what we can do then is give any records of this space, the checklist is a little more defined now about our expectations for cleaning, that clean passes. Um, so we hope to have that out of your calendar the next day, and then, um, get those procedures in place.
Okay, so we intend on this actual, allow groups to use this, this area, bigger area of the position.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I heard from council last time, was an interest in ensuring that this was uh, more well-used and available for us, so we put together a new procedure, a new checklist, a sketch that was really kind of very similar to what the fire department required of us when we were using fire department space, um, so we, we took their process and made it our own, so we should, um, like I said, we should have all of those documents finalized tomorrow, the next day, and I'll get it out to the chamber.
Totally, thank you.
Okay. Council member Isaacson?
Cynthia, um, every now and representing, is that a, a seat counsel, physician to, to, or a student?
Uh, council, so the email that I got from, uh, let's see, Evergreen, it was, please send this to council mayor, let me go to the email, so I can be first. Uh, Evergreen is currently welcoming applications to fill the King County Public Health Hospital District. Share the message below with the mayor, council members, and any commissioners. Looking the further in the email, I just wanna make sure supportive commissioner position, but it seems as though when you look at the application, while they might want to recruit from council and mayor, it looks like any community member can apply from the application.
Okay. Okay.
Alright, okay, so with that, um, we'll move on, I don't think we have any council committee or, uh, committee report. Uh, so we'll move on to other council reports, so maybe this is the opportunity to share what you've been doing, or also kind of use it like you go to the order, if there are concerns you've heard from the community, your questions you have to bring up now. Council member Isaacson?
Um, I was gonna ask this to purpose, it sounds like it is, uh, visited a couple restaurants, who's saying, Steve, you might can help with this, but, um, I seem to have a, a theme from several areas, taking care of, to get things processed by the city, if we're gonna move on with your improvements or licensing improvements, or whatever. First, more than one place. Um, I take it with a grain of salt here from one, but here from multiple, can I start already, or we know, how can I help them, a lot of times we're talking, this is customer not realizing, I'm I'm city council, and I hardly understand, well, I'm a customer, let me go see, you know, I just say, well, that's, I ask, I kind of go a little bit. And, uh, I just wanna see Steve, or where, who can I help them, direct you, or who can I come to, just as a citizen, I have a customer, and say, I'm hearing this, how can we help them, maybe they're doing something wrong, or maybe they're coming to their ones that are sorted, which sometimes, but um, you guys are aware of this, or what can I do?
And I haven't heard a lot, so tech, technically, like Laura's group is handling permitting, yeah, so I, I do believe implementation of Open Gau's building permit module is well underway, so that shouldn't be any sort of um, burden anymore, like, it was just a little confusing, started, but I, I understand it's working well. Whenever there's something for, we, we just get an, an email like, oh, you got that ready to review, so it's super easy, when you got that one, you sort by Open Gau, whatever the little note is, and go get your stuff, so I haven't heard anything on our end, um, we can certainly, uh, Laura is dreaming, and it is reciprocal to.
Yeah, I, the only thing I would say is they've improved flooded with permits, so I don't know if it's a function of trying to get through permits, or if it's just funky system, I do know that last week, um, Bluebeak was pulled, the connection between Bluebeak and Open Gau was, it failed. And so you could not get into the platform last week while they were trying to fix them, they're doing all sorts of programs. So that's, it was just broken in last week, not prior.
Well, the, I think, like, the, kind of the thing, I've seen, like, they feel like they're not going circles around the streets to do this, and then another comes back, and then they do that, and then another one comes back, it's kind of like instead of being a parallel process and serial process, so because you, if, instead of giving kind of a full, you're saying, fix this, 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 and this, and you get it, so here's your first thing, reject, kickback. And then that goes back, and then something else rejects, and it's like, so like, and they're paying rent, and they're paying architects, they're paying all these money to retain people, and they feel like in some cases, the city has a bit of a, um, apprehension to them doing what they wanna do, and the city's just standing there, and they hear rumors from architects, like, well, you're only getting this because that person knows this question. And I don't want to hear that, and I, I, if it is true.
Yeah.
I guess I take it with a grain of salt, we're trying to update to the data, um, and, and help our fellow citizens and business owners work with those, uh, might feel like you're doing purposely held up, because someone doesn't want to. purposely held up because someone doesn't want to have what they're trying to do.
All right. I would say our code is very comprehensive. And the comprehensive plan that we're doing now is a really good opportunity for both community members about kind of structural requirements and impediments that are.
And I would say if you have specifics, you know, maybe like Cynthia or no, I know Laura's out for a week, but let her know if you can go down a little bit.
Yeah, I'd be happy to hear something specific and I'd be happy to do that anyone too. Anyone else? Councilmember Napland? Just I have a couple of things, but to jump on that, I've heard kind of similar feedback and one of the things I brainstormed and I think I spoke to you about it or maybe Laura. But other cities put together, you know, a guide to kind of help people who want to open a business in a city, talks through some of the, you know, different areas that they have to consider, you know, fire code, sunning code, and just make it easier to navigate.
The first priority that I gave him, that creating a small business, for sure, is also on this list.
Yeah. So then I just wanted to record that I attended this in Palm Valley Outdoor Recreation Meeting, my favorite meeting. And a couple of things came up that we're deciding to hear about. The first was some information about a proposal to modify the match requirement on the conservation futures program. And I I'm not sure if you've heard about that as well, Director Lashfey, but the match is currently fifty percent. And the proposal would be to cut that in half and it will need to require a twenty-five percent match, which is significant. And in addition, another aspect of what they're asking for is to allow some funds to be used for immediate needs on the site. Like do we need to put up fencing or are there other things that need to be done to kind of secure the site? And while you wait for an ability to, you know, fully develop the site. And then I had asked the question, well, what about those who are potentially putting in for this year? And if this doesn't go in until next year, are we, you know, should we just hold off? And it sounds like they had conversations about this and that they're hoping that what would get approved is it would retroactively apply to the current applications out there, which is exciting because if we have submitted, we're in the line. And if this opens up a lot more opportunities for other jurisdictions who want to apply, at least we're already in, maybe. So I don't know. I don't know where we're at. But I wanted to share that. And then the other thing that came up during the meeting was about, I I had never heard of it. It's a program called Healthy Land Project. The acronym HELP. And they could come in and they would help on, you know, properties owned by governments or, you know, public lands or private lands and help you, you know, manage invasive species and come up with plans and be technical assistants. And I think actually come in and do some of the work. And I was just thinking, you know, with walking around so much lately, observing there's a lot of invasive species. And it's overwhelming to think, I mean, all the land that City Duval has to take care of. I mean, it's overwhelming. I, no criticism to staff. It's overwhelming. And, you know, it'd be kind of, you know, thinking about economic development, different things. We have areas of land that are, you know, being used by the public. If we could get rid of some of those invasive species and make it, you know, beautify it in some ways. Anyway. It's an exciting program and I don't know if that's something that we could look into taking advantage of. So I wanted to share about that. I wasn't sure if other people had heard about it. And then the other thing is there was a council chat several months ago and the person brought up the trees along One Fifty. And there were a whole bunch of trees that were put in during the development, probably, gosh. I can't remember when it was put in, a long time ago. And all the street trees that line One Fifty that were under the power lines were cut down. And not replaced. And the person who came to the council chat was kind of wondering, you know, what's happening here? And it reminded me that when I was on the tree policy, that it was, we wanted to make sure that the city set an example and we followed our tree policy just the same as everyone else. And so if there were street trees or even any tree, that they would need to be replaced in some way. And so I, it sounds like the trees that were cut down were probably inappropriate for being put under a power line. But perhaps we could, as our code requires, replace it with a more suitable tree. It's it's a pretty unattractive stretch of road because the trees are gone and now blackberries are growing and it doesn't look great. So anyway, I wanted to pass that along. If I'm on Fifth Year, so when you're heading up towards the high school, it's the second neighborhood on the left. Most of the power lines have gone underground, but there's one stretch where the power line are not underground. That stretch. Yeah. And then the last thing I wanted to note is that the Open Gov, when I try to go to look at any budget documents, they all require a password and we don't have access. So all I can see is the very, very, very high level budget. And one of my concerns when we were doing the budget is that we weren't provided with the typical line item budget that could be printed that we would have. And and so I feel really uncomfortable with the fact that I have no access to the budget. And so maybe there's a password, but I think it was meant, I mean, if this was provided to the public, I think it should still be available to a couple of two. And I don't know how to solve that, that's the issue, but I feel uncomfortable. Yeah, definitely. We don't know if it exists.
So the transparency portal was supposed to be launched and is not launched. And I don't have any to afford.
Could we get, I know that behind the scenes Director Mason had downloaded the line item from my understanding into spreadsheet potentially?
I can look, I can look into it. I have a printed copy of the budget that is not a line item budget.
Really? So no one has access to the budget we approved?
I don't think that's true. So the answer, that is not a yes. But it's not publicly available. It is not publicly available where any one of us in the room can go print it. We are supposed to have a transparency module launch. We have had multiple meetings with Open Gov about the delay in getting the transparency portal launched. We continue to meet with Open Gov.
Okay.
To get an answer to that question. As soon as I know, I will absolutely bring it to council.
Okay. And if there's any document that had been created aside, a copy of that would be great.
Are you asking for a copy of the line item from the budget that we can get from Director Mason's?
If that exists. Yeah, in a printable way from Open Gov. Right. Yeah. So if there's even a spreadsheet.
I would be satisfied with that.
Can I ask a quick question based off of, is there any quick workaround patch type thing that they can do? Or like if it's asking for a password, there should be something like, is there some backend password? That they could, you know, like sometimes it'd be like, oh, enter one, two, three, four, like a dummy password. Like if it's a blockade and they set the password with something easy that you could print, put on the page and then people, if they want to access it, I just, that could be a interim. I don't know. That's a really, I'm around techs a lot, so I hear things that I'm like, maybe that would work for, I don't know.
I have to find out and do some troubleshooting as a member of the public to see what it looks like going in.
Yeah.
And see what Open Gov can provide us. It is a project that is ongoing.
Is that all you had?
That, okay.
Other councilmembers? Go ahead.
Were there any more applications?
I have not heard from Director Thomas, who would be in charge of processing this, but I don't know. But we can run update the next meeting.
Well, I've got one of the, so my discussion earlier, one of the dues I got from the issue. That Duval was way more difficult in getting their temporary permit and they already had permits in labor and taxes. And produce information that I think we all like, like documentation where they didn't have a permit at the state level. They don't have that one there or something like that. So again, this was just general conversation. So that was one of the ones that was frustrating. They got through it, but they didn't understand why they're gonna reboot data that's already out there to have it.
So that's really good information for us to collect because our ordinance right now is in our domain. And we can amend that ordinance because we really implemented it as a trial test of the first opportunity to trucks in. And so if we potentially overregulated in that ordinance, it will be helpful to go back to people who tried to work through that process to see if we might back off a bit.
Yeah, that's one, one pushback. And I don't know that providing that or not, I mean, they want that regulated.
Councilmember Mercer.
Yeah, a quick question and and really doesn't fit in the agenda per se, but since we didn't have the cow today, it's kind of a good at the order question and I'm experiencing some bandwidth issues. I was curious just from the city administrator, if if there's an update on sort of the wifi there in the council chambers. I know that was on the to-do list to update and I'm getting messages now that the bandwidth is low, so I'm not getting any pictures or image from the council meeting. And I was curious if there was a status update on on that.
You should not be having bandwidth issues. KPIT did about two weeks ago upgrade the entire city's bandwidth. So we are running at a, I'm gonna look to see.
Some acid, whatever it is.
It's five hundred, whatever the acronym is.
All right. And so it's apparently something else. Yeah, it says, you know, there's a banner across the top, Duval City Council's network bandwidth is low. And then it basically has no picture. So again, don't need to spend time on the call, but I wanted to make you aware. So it's good to know that it's been updated. And it's something else going on for the.
I'm experiencing the same thing on my end, Ron.
Yeah, so thank you.
Have IT look at that. But yes, as of May thirtieth, the city's KPIT bandwidth was increased. It was quadruple, including this building. But I'll have IT take work with that.
Any other councilor reports? Mine's quick. I'll just say tomorrow I'm going to the EWC conference for just one day. So next year, if you guys are looking at doing that, I just, it's right at the end of school. I did miss some stuff that I get to school. So you know, you can only go for one day. I've got a full schedule. Tomorrow it's gonna be a lot, but it'll be a lot of fun. So think about that for next year. All right. So with that, we're gonna move on to our first and only item of unfinished business, which is the six-year transportation improvement program. So I'll hand it over to Director Lashfey.
And again, Mayor Council, Steve Lashfey. Sorry, I finished your screen. I don't know. It's there, but yes, obviously the controls. Getting it shared out. So before you is the action item on the six-year TIP. After the hearing and no public comments, obviously it is staff's recommendation to move forward and you know, approve the resolution twenty-three oh six for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine six-year transportation program. To you folks for questions, discussion.
Any questions or discussion? Go ahead, Councilmember Isaacson.
The packet that I have linked to is old or purposely left blank, like all the funding, the budget impacts, the names, the amount.
Yeah. Yeah, there are no, technically there aren't a budget impacts per se. The budget recognizes any projects out of the fund, but we're not talking about specified projects. So just program doesn't cost anything, but there is a cost of implementing program. But that's not the intent of the finance table on this item.
Uh, Councilmember Napland and then Schaefer. I was just curious if any, there was any more information about what it would take to, and I know you don't like to call it an update because that has a whole nother meaning, but to revise some of the project costs so that it would better reflect reality.
Yeah, we did reach out and have a quick chat with Transcode, who is our transportation consultant. Again, refreshing and updating are currently, you know, can be two separate things. They don't recommend, they recommend the annual escalator, which we didn't do. Pulling things on and off the list can reset the fee in a way that you may not expect. Let's say you took a big project like Third Avenue off the list on the section that is expected to be developer driven. So your numerator denominator may do things that you weren't expecting. So if you pull projects. Correct. So if you pull projects off the list, right, well, when you're looking at something like this, if you had something that was done, you probably and then that could adjust how the fees created. So it is, at this time, recommended, since we're so close to the comp and update that we do leave it. And then comprehensive plan will drive the transportation element and the transportation will talk back and forth with how we do land use. And then we will come up with a new project list or an updated project list and then redesignate the share to the city or non-growth related. Obviously, this share to any road road network for growth-related activities and we'll split those costs back out. Yes, we did have a discussion, they're all looking under the hood per se with the map and it's, it can be changed. Just not really recommended as.
Okay. And too late then to, that would be too late for that, any adjustments to be captured with all the permits that are out right now, basically, because that's what is the timing of collecting? I know some is like.
Yeah.
Like some get vested at different times of a project. I'm not really.
Right. Legal is here and I believe transportation effect fees are vested at time of completed building permit application, not one partner.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Schaefer.
We'll see. I'm moved. So was there any more discussion?
Any other questions or discussion? Councilmember.
Okay. I approve the resolution twenty-three oh six for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-nine six-year transportation improvement program project.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say aye. Great. Question passes. And so with that, we're gonna move into executive session, evaluation of an applicant's qualifications for employment under RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one ten.
Yeah, sorry, just for the core than where. Was this point three twenty-six, the point three point five B?
Permission? Oh.
Okay.
Okay. We were good though, yeah. I was like, I don't remember what was. Okay. So how are we gonna, what are the logistics then of our executive session?
Okay, so we are going to excuse everyone for the executive session and go on to fifteen thing, which I will bring up on my computer and we'll pause this meeting. We can all go downstairs and I'll bring my laptop.
Yes. Do we have, what would you ask me to do? So we're gonna have to make fifteen minutes. And then if it goes longer, it'll have something to do with that. It's gonna be another clock or something like that. Okay.
Maybe better.
Now we have other people that.
When you get a motion and you look back at.
Now we can come back in any, yeah, okay. All right, so we've completed our thick little session. Move on to the first item under new business resolution ending evolved state of emergency agenda bill twenty three dash thirty eight with our administration. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Secretary Henry, Council members of the community staff. Um, so uh, there's an agenda bill in the file and a resolution to um, resolve to end the proclamation of emergency regarding COVID along with uh, pulling the resolutions related to a vaccine requirement for um staff. This is consistent with many other jurisdictions in our area, the state, the city of Seattle, King County have all both rescinded the emergency declaration declaring COVID a pandemic. Well, declaring COVID a an emergency that requires um uh, causing certain regulatory requirements um as well as requiring a vaccine mandate for staff. At this point, unless you are one of the staff members who regularly gets boosters because you have comorbidities, almost no one is fully vaccinated for COVID unless you are regularly getting boosters. The state, the CDC, the county, the city, almost every city that had a vaccine mandate for staff have all pulled it at this point. And so we're following the guidance of those larger, more diverse regulatory agencies and bringing to council um resolutions in both the emergency declarations, so it's a COVID mandate. Uh, open to any questions. I was here for the conversations regarding instituting the pandemic emergency or the vaccine requirement, but I will answer any questions that I.
Uh, Councilmember Mercer and then Schaefer.
I unmute myself. Just a sort of a general practical question. I know for the most part, you know, it's it's become obviously the vaccine and anti-vax movement. It's a much more divisive issue, I guess, is part of the broader polarization we're sort of seeing today and and I am, you know, looking forward. I know there's some CDC recommendations in terms of new for the fall and winter in terms of changing the the vaccine mix, much like a like the flu. Um, I was just thinking as part of emergency management and the preparation. If, you know, I understand the the rationale for aligning with uh state and county guidance to to be in alignment and and sort of not rock the boat. But has there been any consideration in terms of incorporating language into the uh, whether it is the hiring contracts or other things that that basically would set it expectation around vaccine requirements, you know, as warranted by, you know, X, Y, Z, or or um just to avoid sort of the need to sort of turn on and off the switch as uh, you know, conditions change on the ground. I I don't expect this. It's the last time we're going to see some type of of um you know, pandemic or response. And I was just curious, you know, again, not necessarily something we'd need to talk about tonight, but it would be great as part of sort of emergency uh preparation if if we are thinking about that in a city, if we have to do this again, what's the most expedient way? And is there a way to be proactive to avoid, you know, issues with unions or issues with specific employees um that I know was, you know, more of an outlier, but we did have some of those scenarios happen um this this last go round. So that was a long question. I think it's probably more straightforward answer as a yes, no, but uh, just want to, I was, you know, interested more generally in terms of how the city's thinking about going forward.
Um, yes, the resolution as written includes language that says the city mayor council will continue to um, you know, be mindful of, you know, any future emergencies that come that require vaccines. So there in the resolution, there's a commitment to continue to follow public health data and to follow the emergency management um policy. So that's, I think, my second to the last paragraph of the resolution as written. Um, you know, generally speaking, whatever the condition of employment, we would have to come to council, talk to council first if we're going to institute another uh vaccine requirement for staff that would begin with a conversation with council. Uh, council would then kind of define the condition of employment. We would then go to the union to negotiate what that would look like and any reasonable accommodations from that requirement. Um, so we kind of know what that process looks like having been through it once. Um, you know, during the last years while the COVID pandemic was going on, I had the opportunity to do quite a bit of COVID litigation. And we learned a lot of lessons about what works and what doesn't in terms of instituting conditions of employment. So I think by and large, employer municipal and county and state employers have a pretty good understanding of some important lessons learned from last go around on how to, I think, ethically and equitably bargain those kinds of conditions with uh conditions of employment with representative employees. So I don't know, Ron or Councilmember.
Yeah, no, I I think you did generally answer my question and I apologize. I I can't pull up anything. I'm again still having bandwidth issues. I don't know if they're on the city side or my side, so I can't pull up the resolution. So, you know, appreciate that point of clarification. And I know again, it's um, it's not a one size fits all. So I it's good to know that that particular paragraph is in there um because I, you know, again, I it's um, I think as to your point, lessons learned, like why make it harder than it needs to be the next time we have to impose something. So yeah, I'm fine with this approach. Thank you.
Some of the councilmembers.
Uh, no.
Okay, other questions or discussion?
When is the approval list? All right. So how motion to approve resolution of law.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? All those in, was there?
No, I was just reading the recommendation. There's a couple of resolutions that twenty dash or three and twenty dash or four.
And I can answer that. There were.
Twenty like that as well.
Yeah, so the first two in twenty twenty were related to um the mayor's initial declaration of emergency and then following a council action to allow the mayor to dispense or unregulatory requirements related to the emergency declaration and then a resolution by council to support that. Um, and then the twenty one twelve, and I don't have it up in front of me. I'm going by memory. Um, that was the resolution that instituted a vaccine requirement for staff.
Councilmember Lovett.
Yeah, so just to clarify, because there's it's poor connection, but this actually is effectively removing the vaccine requirement as well as lifting the emergency declaration. Um, it's doing both, right?
Correct.
Great. Perfect.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And we'll move on to presentation on finance department staffing with our city administrator.
Uh, thank you. This will be a very short um presentation. You have some material that was included in your packet on uh different configurations of uh departments in uh license jurisdictions and and uh close proximity jurisdictions for how the finance departments are structured. You will see some blue boxes. Uh, when you take a look at that material, thank you, clerk Quatero. Um, if you page down, uh, there are some blue boxes. Those blue boxes there recognize positions in those jurisdictions that have HR um responsibilities that sometimes overlap with payroll benefits. And so this is an opportunity to review this information. Uh, the July eighteenth meeting, um, there might be more information on rightsizing, level setting. Um, thinking about how to perpetually staff the finance department. Um, I did put in our current configuration all the way to the left as well as potential proposed configuration. That proposed configuration would be to include a deputy finance director into the staffing complement at Duval. Uh, reasons for that, which will be more developed and explored in later meetings, would be to paint about succession planning. Um, where you see other orange positions um are where they have a a position that's called a deputy. But if you look at some of the other jurisdictions and perpetrator, if you look at, I included quite a few jurisdictions um here. There are others that have an assistant um finance position that kind of operates as a deputy. So you'll see all the FTEs that I included there. Um, but as we think about the finance director replacement and looking at the qualifications of finance director, this is the information I want to counsel to have. And um again, further conversation at future meetings, but this is just kind of introductory concept for council's consideration. This was super couple graphic.
It's really nice looking at it. Uh, were there other questions or comments? Yeah.
So what would you, I got asked a question, or going at you, one of them is I will get, we have an associate, starts with an associate, director, other places there are much larger ones that have finances associated. People have deputy treasurers, so the deputy finance directors. What's the roles and the duties requiring the cost associated with those different ones, what I would be trying to understand.
Yeah.
I really don't want to discuss them now.
Yeah, so um if we come to council with recommendations, um, the recommendations would include kind of cost comparisons. Um, certainly, you know, a a deputy officer alone would not necessarily um, depending on the complexity of the position, the duties assigned to that position might not be the same kind of deputy that we would hire in Duval as a smaller jurisdiction. So um lots of opportunities to think about what that position might look like. Um, my concern really is that we lack the structure for succession planning here in Duval. Um, the other concern I have is we have some very large projects um on the horizon and being able to maybe even in the interim, and again, I'm not making your recommendation, this is a conversation. Um, there might be possibilities for an interim staffing complement that is a two to three year staffing complement that really focuses on these big public financing projects that we have, Third Avenue, City Hall, and that staffing might not look the same in five years. Um, so there could be an interim solution that is really focused on strategic municipal financial decisions that might not look the same after some of that work is done.
Okay, so we'll go and move on. That was all you had, right, on that one?
That's okay.
So we'll move on to our last item, school district interlocal agreement, agenda bill twenty three dash forty with chief de blah.
Good evening, council staff, members of the community. I'm chief de blah. Um, I'm bringing forward agenda bill twenty three dash forty. It's an interlocal agreement between the city of Duval and the Rebe School District uh to provide at least liaison officer at the Cherry Valley Elementary School for the school year twenty three and twenty four. Uh, this negotiation or this agreement is negotiated annually, uh so is already in our annual budget for uh in an estimated forty thousand dollars in expenditures and the revenues are also forty thousand dollars for twenty twenty four. The purpose of this agreement is to provide a review school district with a consistent presence of twenty hours per week uh from the Duval Police Department at Cherry Valley Elementary. There is a change this year. The school district has eliminated the DARE program from their curriculum. And this will start next school year. Uh, this is due to similar information that's being added to their state curriculum. Uh, they recognize the relationship between students and law enforcement is important, and they would like the previous uh air officer to participate in the state curriculum by providing information on various topics, including bullying, drugs, alcohol, um, peer pressure. Uh, we're still working on a logistics. That's going to work, but uh that is something we're interested because we do want to maintain those relationships in the build for students at the elementary level. Um, I'm requesting council to suspend council procedures, section five point six, requiring additional review, looking to approve the mayor's assignment out LA with the school district for school year twenty twenty. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Appleton?
Yeah, I think it's been the same effect amount for, I don't know, what, seven, six or seven years?
Yeah, prices, prices.
It's just our costs have gone up and we're raising prices on utilities and all these other things. And so I'm just curious, is there a reason why we're not doing a poll adjustment? And I mean, our salary schedules have gone up and our costs have gone up substantially. So I'm just curious.
Well, I mean, last year you talked about, you know, because of COVID. This year with the elimination of the DARE program, that's going to be some cost savings there as well. Uh, but I did work out like if we do twenty hours per week and school years, forty two weeks minus five for vacations and um holidays, so you're talking thirty seven weeks. So top step officer is forty eight, twenty nine times, you know, a twenty hours week is nine sixty five. So thirty seven weeks, the school year is going to be thirty five thousand seven hundred and thirty four hours.
Is that the fully loaded cost for that?
Officer.
Well, it's our top step. Most of our officers have this in three years on, so I just did it on top step.
That's, I definitely think it's the fully loaded, like um uh, you know, taxes and all the other associated costs of an officer. I guess I don't know what the forty eight dollars is that represents the salary schedule or the.
It's the, based off the salaries.
Okay, so not the, not the, uh, benefits exemption, yeah, benefits taxes pension.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Schaefer?
I'll say I move to approve the interlocal uh agreement with the school district for twenty three, twenty four school year. There.
Then moved and seconded. Is there more discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say ayes.
Yeah.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, if there are no objections, we'll adjourn at eight twenty one. Thanks, everyone. All right, we will see you on July eighteen. We're going. Well, send them down. I would.